We should be where people can hear us, Mr. President. If that everybody else muted, if you'd like to unmute them for a moment, we can.
Yeah, just a moment. I need to let them know something.
Uh, unmute themselves. Let them unmute themselves.
Are they unmuted?
Well, they can unmute themselves now. They should be able to hear us.
Eric Spatafor, if you can hear us, will you unmute yourself and let us know that you can hear? Mr. Spatafor? How about Rick Rodriguez? Rich, can you hear?
Try someone. I don't hear from them.
All right. Can anyone hear us? If you can unmute yourself and let us know. Joanne, are you in there? Joanne, are you in there? Can you hear us? Eric Spatafor? If you can hear us, unmute yourself, please.
Susan, if you can hear us, will you unmute?
I can hear you.
Joanne, can you hear us? If you can unmute yourself and let us know.
I can hear you.
All right, so we would assume that everybody else on Zoom can hear us. Let me share with you, people who are watching from Zoom. We do not have a public comment period during the working session. So just for your information. All right. With that, we'll call the Harrison County Special Meeting Board. If you'll please rise. Little invocation here. Lord, give us the opportunity to work for the people who put us here. Make us worthy of being able to decide on things that will be in the best interest of the county. And as the Pope says, be not afraid. If you'll join me in the Lord's Prayer, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is, I think, one of few work session special meetings that we've had during my years. Mr. Parker, you want to set the parameters for us? Our do's and our don'ts, and what comes out of this?
The items on the agenda were the ones that the Commission, to the best of my understanding, requested to be reviewed or on the work session agenda, meeting agenda, for consideration or discussion. And the Commission can follow up with those as they so desire and, you know, take action, take no action, request action in the future, whatever the Commission would want.
All right, so what you're saying is that we can vote on items or not vote?
Yes, you can vote if you so desire on the items that are listed on the agenda.
And where do the items go from here?
Wherever the Commission so desires. If you want on a future meeting or...
Does it become a mandate if we vote an affirmative? Or does it have to go to regular session of the County Commission?
No, this is a special meeting, even though it's a work session, it is a special meeting. And if the Commission so desires for action to be taken, they can take that. And then it's just as binding as any other Commission meeting.
All right. Item one is to review, discuss, and consider procedures and/or items the County Commission desires to include and require for meeting minutes. Mr. Parker, you want to set the stage or one other Commissioner?
That item is on there to request or as a request for additional, you know, information to be included in our meeting minutes possibly. I pulled from Upsher County where I was familiar with their process and procedure, included that meeting packet in the information for the Commission meeting from their July 23, 2020 meeting. It includes the minutes of the meeting as was drafted and approved by the Commission, a copy of the agenda itself, and then a copy of any attachments to the agenda, as well as then the report of the County Clerk on the last few pages. So that is their meeting packet as it relates to that meeting. It gives, you know, a brief description in the meeting minutes itself, and then somebody can follow up and look at the agenda and look at the attachments if they're, you know, interested in more detail than what the minutes provide there on the first few pages.
All right.
But it's the Commission, you know, it's the Commission minutes you can have anywhere from, you know, the motions and just the outcome of those motions, which is all that has to be recorded. Or you can have a court transcript verbatim if you so desire.
I think Robert's rules do provide that the minimum as you just spoke to it. Discussion, Patsey.
You know, the only thing I, when we were talking about that last week, if you go to Board of Education meeting, they have a system called Boards Doc. And on the Boards Doc, you have a link for the budget, vendor, personnel, the minutes, the agenda. And you can go back over time and see that. I mean, you can go as far back as you want to, Ron, David. And you can even, because of our Zoom now with those cameras, if you want to, very cheaply through this system, you can record the meeting, which it already is, make an attachment, a link, and then it's on YouTube immediately. So anybody that wanted to go back and hear what we said, what was voted on, or what is already there. And, I mean, if you would go to Board of Education meeting, it's right there for everybody in the public to see. I mean, everybody has access to everything as far back as you want to go.
So it's beyond YouTube?
Yeah, you could. That's recording right as we speak after the meeting. If you had a question on what I said or what you said yourself, or I said, anything, it's right there. And you download it to YouTube and watch the whole meeting in its entirety. So you'd have that link plus the minutes of the clerk. And there would be no question of what was said, what was voted on. But at the same time, the meeting is organized in the sense that if it's a budget item, you click on Budget. If it's a personnel item, you click on Personnel. And anybody in the public that's watching it on their laptop at home can follow along with the meeting. And it's very, very cheap. It's less than a couple thousand bucks a year.
David, I don't have an issue with that. My issue's just in the minutes.
It records it for you, David.
Yeah, I mean, the minutes that we have up here, I have copies of them. But without having originals to go along with this and the audio, you can't go back and see what was said.
Well, you will be able to now because it's recording it, and it'll spell it out for you.
The actual minutes document is the official documentation of the meeting.
Yeah.
Any auxiliary recording, unless it's included in the minutes or referenced in the minutes to be included, it would not be an official, even though it could be verbatim, a recording verbatim, it wouldn't be the official documentation of the meeting unless the Commission took action to make that recording a part of the minutes. And then it's somehow kept along with the written documentation.
I don't think we have to. What I'm saying is that if any question David would have, even though, you know, the original was hers, she does. I mean, he can literally bring up the minutes. It's spelled out. It's audiod out. And it's recorded like television, and he can play it, or anybody, but not you, me, anybody.
Could the minutes that, the hard copies that we get, reflect that for a more detailed review of the Commission and refer it to YouTube?
You can. And right now, after the meeting, if you go to the last meeting, Board of Education, you can click the link, and you can watch the whole video right now.
Yeah, I'm just saying to make it official as part of our record. So if somebody had a question. I go back, guys, to Sylvia's days. And when she used to take the minutes, they were so detailed. I mean, really detailed. And I'm for one that might, and we had to keep those recordings. And I think they were in boxes somewhere downstairs. And, I mean, it was difficult for the clerk to try to manage and keep those things in a fashion that when somebody did a FOIA or whatever, we had to go back and then try to find it and make sure the water didn't get to whatever the recording was that we had and so on. I like the idea that Patsey said about the School Board with that. If it could be something that we could reference in our minutes that for a more detailed... Then let them go there. I mean, of course...
You know, the agenda we put out is bookmarked. And anybody that follows along, you know, as long as they get to the link, which we send out to numerous people, and if they want on the list, they can get on the list. You know, they can follow along, like, item one, item two, three. I mean, those are all bookmarked out there on our agenda today.
Yeah.
Now, one thing Johnny may or may not know off the top of his head, not to put him on the spot, but for example, I don't know if there's a way to tie the Zoom recording to the minutes we put online and have a link to that Zoom recording. There should be able to. Yeah, I just, how we keep it there forever, I don't know. We can work with IT if the Commission so desires to have that. Because we do put the minutes on our website. Along with those minutes, you could put a link to the Zoom recording if you so desire. And the bookmarked agenda, I'm assuming, could be also placed in that.
But we don't know how long the Zoom...
Unless it was deleted. I'll find out. Unless it was deleted, it should stay there.
Like YouTube?
Yes, or whatever, yeah.
It would be on our server. It should be in perpetuity. We'd have it forever.
Oh, would Johnny?
Yes.
Further discussion, David?
Oh, I guess I can see that maybe YouTube could work. I just know that the present system isn't working, at least for me. When I go back and see that we've been at it for two hours in a meeting, and we have a page and a half, a few pages of minutes, and they're very swift noted. Our discussions really aren't in there, even when we have discussions with the people that when they're asking for something to be from an alley to a will, there's not much to hang our hat on, I don't feel. I mean, it took me an hour, hour and a half to go through a year and a half worth of minutes. And there's a lot of areas in here that I think that some of the Commissioners might not be happy with the way they voted because it implied some things. So I think if we don't get it cleared up into a more definite... And I'm still thinking somebody like a court reporter to actually keep track because the audio is still, you can, I don't know how you're going to split it or whose audio we're going to use. Are we going to use Susan's or are we going to use?
Susan, do you keep...
Tyler.
Do you keep the audio? Do we have an audio of this too?
Yes, sir.
And how long is the audio kept?
As long as we need to.
I didn't know whether you had a statutory responsibility or whatever for it.
We keep them as long as we can. I mean, I don't know how long the discs are going to last.
Would you be...
If you're a court reporter, you're looking at at least $220 a meeting. At least. And that may be to transcribe.
That'd be minimum, yes. My opinion, that's $200 to $400, depending on the length of the meeting and transcription, off the top of my head.
Yeah. I'm saying clearly, because we've had it done.
Yeah, we've paid sometimes to have. Now, you know, I don't know if the, again, it's whatever the Commission so desires. You could, but it would be difficult to search possibly a Zoom recording. Those would probably be longer lasting than, like you said, than the disc.
And keep recreating the disc, as far as that goes.
And, you know, if the Commission so desires to include both recordings as part of the minutes, the official minute packet, then both would be subject to FOIA and discovery. It's whatever the official minute packet is that is the official documentation of the meeting.
Did either of you two look at the minute packet that you said provides you from my or for Upsher County?
Yeah. As far as the minutes go, I mean, I glanced at it. They don't seem much different than what we did, other than what's attached. And whatever's attached to the order book, you just have to look for it.
Yeah.
I actually like the video part because it actually goes into viewing us as we have our discussions. And, I mean, you can put down whatever you want in written form, but then it really shows the intent. So, anyway.
I mean, I'm willing to give it a try. If Susan, when she turns the minutes in, we get the rough notes and CD copy, it goes into the...
The rough notes I don't have to give to you. I don't, I'm not opposed to giving them to you.
Then I vote for the other because without the rough notes to go back and look at compared to what's been written, I don't know that...
Are you saying that I'm not putting stuff in the minutes that should go in the minutes? Is that what you're stating?
I'm saying it's hard to determine what the minutes say that I had.
I just want to make sure I understand what the problem is, that's all.
The problem is there's not enough detail. Not close to enough detail. There's votes here that does not discuss how the three Commissioners came up with a two-one or a three-three or a one-two vote.
Well, minutes are not for a lot of information. They're just the basics.
That's the issue.
All right.
Because I can tell you we have some issues now that are going to come up because of what's in the minutes. I can't help that.
So David, you're going to hold me accountable, right? I said it, but now I'm saying something different.
There's quite a bit of that in that too.
Have a right to change my mind, right?
Yeah.
All right.
But we keep bringing up things that we've previously voted on, and I don't think we understand that, and things keep getting changed as the vote goes. If we're going to vote for something once, then we can't go a month later because you're not sure how the minutes reading turns around and gets twisted when they vote. And we're doing that.
All right. Mr. Parker, you got enough information to move it forward?
What do we move it forward, Ron? What do we move it forward?
I thought it was just to review. What's your comments, David?
My question would be, if we move to do the YouTube option, which would provide details, everything you're looking for, could the Commission move to make that part of the official record and just put it on the agenda? Please review to YouTube link XYZ for detailed information on the minutes. Would that suffice? I feel like it would, but I'm just trying to understand.
All right. That's good. Thank you, Jessica. What's Jessica's comments there, Patsey?
I don't know. Ask Gary if he's over there, if it's official minutes for the School Board. I mean, what we're talking about going, they've already done for years.
Gary, as staff, did you hear Patsey's comment? And we'd like to, as President of the School Board, give us a little comments with regard to minutes and the procedure and so on.
Yeah, I heard it. We, and I think I previously talked to a couple of members about the Board Docs. It's really saved us because, one, it prepares the minutes a lot quicker, and it records all the votes. So I can go back and look at 2014, see what we discussed. Not only that, see how everyone voted on that. But in addition to that, we've installed, and I think there's two separate issues we're talking about there because you're doing this over Zoom because of that. But we've installed, you know, better camera system in the ceiling down there. So everything, our meetings are recorded. We used to run them on the TV on the public access channel. But now there's a YouTube channel for the Board of Education where you can find our meetings on there. So that's the two issues. But Board Docs, I don't know, it's not going to get to the detail I think that Commissioner Henkel wants. But it's a better bookkeeping on the front end, meaning you don't have to have a staff member who sends out an email with a link to 1,000 people. You just have the Board Docs, basically, there's a link that's always on your website. So you just go to the website, click on it, and it shows this upcoming meeting. And it shows all the agenda items that are going to be on that meeting. So from that end, I guess Board Docs is better. It's better bookkeeping, record keeping from the front end. It doesn't really help you on your meeting. But we've kind of fixed that. And I understand what Commissioner Henkel's saying with the detail. But if you have good camera system and good audio, you can put that onto a YouTube link like we do off of your main webpage, and it's all there. But the Board Docs, I think, would save your staff time in preparing the agenda because you just do a couple clicks and it's automatically live. And not only that, but then each, there's a login for each Commissioner like we would as School Board members, and then all the documentation is there behind it. So there's regular that the public can see, and then there's the executive portion of it that we can see. So, I mean, I recommend Board Docs. It's cheap, and it's really changed what we've been able to do, and it's made it easier. But I think there's two or three parts that involved in your conversation. But one of them is, you know, the Zoom, the quality on Zoom is not, I mean, it's okay, but it's not going to be the same as if you got a nice camera, which isn't too expensive, put it in your ceiling, and then recorded all your meetings and put them onto a YouTube page.
But if I vote yes, it literally has on record that I voted yes.
Yeah, I can go back and pull it up, and it's going to say, who made the motion, who seconded it, and on everything on that agenda. But I know from the standpoint of preparing the minutes, they're done a lot quicker because it's, you know, it's, she's sitting there, our secretary, and as the votes are made, she's putting it into the system. So at the end of it, they're basically already prepared during the meeting.
All right.
So that's how it turned into minutes. That's my question, Gary. How does it get turned into minutes?
Then after she's done, she has all that on there. And then there's a form that's printed out, and then she can add to that minutes or take away based on her notes. But it's going to have the votes. You don't have to sit there and type the who made the motion, all that. That's automatically done as the meeting's going along. So then it's easier at the end. She's just able to pull up the minutes. And then if she needs to add or take away whatever, she can do that. But the vote, she doesn't have to worry about typing who voted what way because it's recorded at that time. And not only that, but a Commissioner could look up on the screen because as they vote, they can look and make sure their vote was recorded right because it's going to show the agenda item on the screen in the meeting room that says the ayes and the nays. Kind of like in the legislature, how you can look and see how you voted in case you voted the wrong way.
Gary, how about from a detailed standpoint? In other words, discussion to arrive at taking the vote? In other words, there could be a lot of dialogue.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I understand where you're coming from and where Commissioner Henkel's come from. That's why we use the, you know, we include the videos. So all of our, everyone knows all of our meetings are videotaped, and that becomes... Otherwise, you know, how much, you could sit there and type all day. I mean, basically, you just, it's either you're going to do a transcript or you're going to do a video. That's just my, you know, that's just how we've done it. Because we found the Board Docs has been helpful. It's saved a lot of, basically, it's probably saved a whole day, a week, on the minutes and preparing and preparing the agenda.
Right. All right, Gary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Anything else, Patsey? I hear David over here. David?
I'll find if we can get the videos set up and keep it, make sure that it comes on the minutes for me.
All right. You want to put that in form of a motion?
What I'd recommend is working with IT, have that available for show and tell as soon as we can on the actual minutes. What we're getting now, whatever detail the Commission desires in written form, the bookmarked agenda being attached to made a part of that packet, either just on the link or whatever. And then the Zoom recording being attached and tied to that meeting. Those three things, however IT, however we can get that all combined. And then the public could, or Commissioner, whoever, could go to our website, pull up that meeting, and have three things or whatever to click on.
Does that require additional work on the Clerk's office, or does it make it simpler?
Sounds like it makes it simpler.
Yeah, it wouldn't require any additional work. It may be just...
Cleanup.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right.
I can, that, I don't see any additional work.
I would like to go and see what they're speaking.
Yeah, now, and then to possibly go to a document program such as that, but in the interim.
All right.
Now it's going to require more work on our IT staff, uh, of combining, we have the pieces, it's just combining those pieces.
And maybe, maybe what IT needs to do is, uh, uh, we set the priorities for them instead of every time, uh, they're up there, they get 25 telephone calls, come here, come there, or whatever, and it takes it away from.
Yes.
What the priority is. I thought we had an odd system, but, um.
Yeah, we do. It's just a matter of combining those pieces into one spot.
All right.
Uh, how we go about doing that and can we accomplish that and how we go about doing that.
We want to give them three weeks or four weeks.
Three will be fine, I think.
All right.
Now for, hold your peace, Johnny.
Being the lowest among us, I will hold my peace.
All right, so the motion. David put it in, uh, some sort of form so that Susan will be able to.
And we'll make sure it's ready.
Record it.
Uh, IT staff is again looking into, uh, the document. Require, uh, some programs that we need for the meeting and to set up video that, so the quality and the audio that it can be used to record and, uh, used to go along with the minutes.
All right. Any further discussion? Passy? Here are none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, item two is review, discuss, and consider change in procedure for the commission approval of requisitions and invoices. At this time, the change in procedure is not dependent upon software program utilized by the county. And we have examples A through D there. Mr. Parker, you want to set the stage for this discussion?
The, uh, it's been, uh, some requests or discussion of the stacks of invoices that the commission reviews, uh, of a procedure where a printout could be available for those invoices for review. It's, uh, to be included in the agenda packet and available at the meeting where the commission could sign off on that. I'm calling it an edit report, batch edit report, or whatever the versions I have there. To a, and in my mind, I, how I would see that is the different departments or constitutional officials would still be submitting their requisitions to the commission office, uh, no later than, uh, 2:00 PM on a Monday, uh, which I think is the current time period. We've been asking for that to happen. And we would review those as an administrative staff, uh, and forward, uh, those to the bookkeeping department, to Ms. Thomas's staff by noon on Tuesday, uh, just as we review them now and try to catch, uh, key punch errors on coding. I, I know we had some of those recently, uh, as it relates to the tax office evidently versus 404 versus 401, which caused an issue. Uh, you know, we'll try and catch those as we can, uh, to make sure they're coded correctly, et cetera, et cetera. We forward to, uh, the bookkeeping department by noon on Tuesday. And then asking bookkeeping to get the edit batch, they would have to actually input the invoices just as they do now, except not post them. They would be an edit batch and a pending status, so to speak, pending payment, uh, based on the commission approval. Those will come back by two o'clock on Friday, and then we could include that with the agenda that we finalized, or draft agenda finalized on Friday, and then the agenda that goes out on Monday, uh, could be sent, uh, so. It's, uh, then that agenda packet would have a printout. The invoices would be returned from bookkeeping with that printout. So if the commission had a question on any invoice in that stack, it's readily available, uh, to review. If not, then the commission could sign off on that edit report, and then those will go back to bookkeeping for posting. That procedure is, as I understand, is acceptable to the state auditors officers, many organizations, entities that approve a listing of invoices. They don't necessarily, the Board of Education members, county commission members, whatever, city council members, wouldn't necessarily sign every invoice. That hasn't been the practice here.
Right. All right. So the process now is someone needs a material or supply. They put in a requisition for that item. They don't purchase it unless it's an emergency item that needed to be.
Yes.
So they put in the requisition. The requisition then is signed off by the supervisors, department director, or the constitutional officer.
Correct.
And that's a requisition to purchase. That's not the purchase.
Yes, we would still be doing what I'm calling quotes on our odd system, the utilizing odd system. You have the choice of an invoice or a quote. Uh, we'd still be doing the quotes. The quotes would not get input into the pay, uh, accounts payable system until there's an actual invoice. The listing of quotes would be generated by the commission office just as we do now. Uh, we could generate a listing of quotes for consideration and approval. There'd be two stacks. Stack of quotes, stack of invoices. Invoices may be utility bills, uh, small five dollar purchases or whatever. Quotes would be more higher-end items outside the normal process of, you know.
So what you're saying, the invoices, uh, have already been purchased and we're paying for it?
Not if we're doing the quotes while, should be on the odd system right now. Should be a quote generated, comes through the administrative office here, comes to the commission for approval, that quote, then we go into the odd system. Update electronically, they receive an email that the quote was approved. That's their authorization to proceed to purchase.
All right.
They proceed to purchase, get the invoice to us, it's matched up with the quote, and then taken to bookkeeping for payment.
I'm, I'm sure on the purchase orders that we, Commissioner, sign to proceed to purchase, those items, many of them have already been purchased.
Many of them have been purchased, yeah. Whether it be smaller amounts.
Or larger amounts.
Or larger amounts. Sometimes the quote is not obtained. I sent out an email.
Couple of weeks ago.
Reminding the department had the need for quotes. It was made quite clear to them, they need quotes. Otherwise, they can come explain why they didn't get a quote before they obligated the county to a financial obligation.
All right.
For the commission department has.
Discussion. Passy? David?
So, since I've been here, we've been fighting the same issue over and over and over. Do things get purchased without any approval? And we're always changing the act of fact.
And that has been the past practice of the commissioners that I have sat here with before also. I don't think there has been, uh, um.
I feel kind of fully signed on these things because they've already been done. I don't know why I have to.
Yeah. Well, that's true.
Because they've already been purchased, they've already been being used.
Right.
But there's no, there's no oversight as far as the commission's concerned of, or, that, uh.
I, I don't disagree. Susan, you have any comments on, on that? I mean, how do we, uh, uh?
I mean, I don't have a problem with Willie's suggestion, but I do think we need to look into some type of software.
Oh, I, I agree with that. We need to look at a.
We should have done it.
We need a.
Many moons ago.
Fifteen years ago, yes, perhaps, doesn't matter.
Probably, probably longer than that. Go back to a lot of these commissioners.
One of, one of the difficulties of, because you can generate a purchase order with our system right now and tie it to the accounting system. But there's one point of contact that does that, and then if there's any deviations, you have to, it's a, it's duplication of work to go in and change it with our current program. If we had a program that was more user-friendly, where if Johnny wants to input a quote or a purchase order, he does it, it generates, gets to the system, and, you know, then can be approved by the commission at a meeting.
And encumber the funds once it's.
Yeah. That would help. If there's a, use more user-friendly system is what we need to obtain or look for. In the interim.
Not enough to date system. We're just, just all over.
Uh, yeah, I mean, this current system operated on DOS in 1980, and they updated it since then, I'm, early eighties. I mean, it's, it's.
Long overdue.
Long overdue. I mean, it's a stable program. I mean, it keeps running forever, but it's not user-friendly.
So, um, we need to direct staff, uh, Passy and David, to do what? Come back in three weeks with what?
I think Ms. Thomas.
I would like to see.
Yeah, and the, and the commission office need to work in conjunction for any vendor program that we're looking at. And, uh, in the interim, if we wanted to implement this procedure, it would help the commission, I think. And, uh, it's really not any more work. It's, again, it's rearranging the pieces of the work we're already doing.
Because ninety-five percent of that gets approved anyway, so it's not like Tony's going to.
Right. I mean, once in a while, you'll have an invoice that the commission does not approve. That would need deleted from that edit batch report.
All right.
That is a rare instance.
I'd like to see, uh, once the committee sees this, look into.
All right.
But on that committee, I think, I'd like to see, uh, maybe get one or two that they'll do it. Uh, county firms that are using them and working with updated, uh, programs to sit in and work with us to see if we can come up with the best thing.
Okay, best practice.
Best practice. So if you can get that and the, and the staff can find a couple of CPAs or some of the largest firms because of what we do to, to give us a hand in making sure that we don't go down another rabbit hole.
All right. Passy, you heard David's, uh, comments?
Yes, sir.
In the interim, do you want to per, look at this procedure that we've outlined with our current programs?
I don't.
Okay. Time and measure.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of.
I agree. Why?
I don't want to try to change.
And then.
Rechange, and then rechange.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wheels broke. If we're going to fix it, fix it with a new program.
We'll, we'll bring you the, the stat to review then, as we have then.
So Willie, will you and Susan, uh, uh, get together and put a plan together of getting a committee or group where you guys can take a look and then get back to the commission? Until then, I reckon we're going to continue with the system that we have. All right, so that's the motion. Any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item three is review, discuss, consider financial matters and/or budget items, general county code severance, vital service levy, financial stabil, stabilization, and other county funds. Again, Mr. Parker, set the stage for us.
Uh, I have included in the agenda packet, uh, you know, printout of our current budget as well as, uh, sheriff's financial statement for last year, and then individual printouts of some different funds that I track, uh, nine or ten back through June of 2009, or July of 2009. So for ten years or so, history of, uh, revenues, expenditures, cash balances, and then flowing over year-to-date numbers. Uh, if you have, you know, specific questions about any funds, uh, I mentioned earlier, about a coding error, uh, for the, uh, tax office, the sheriff, uh, sent, evidently sent out an email to the commission and Ms. Thomas, I'm not sure what all that included, uh, it wasn't copied, but we pulled a copy of the, uh, invoice, uh, and it was Kay Casto and Cheney that dealt with professional services for seven, $7,401.80. That was a, a coding error on the, uh, commission staff part where the actual bill itself had 401 on it, which is a county commission, uh, area department that it should have been charged to. When we put it into the odd system, it was 404, and that wasn't caught in the review. So it was input as 404, and then it came out of the sheriff's tax office, uh, charge. We can do a JB entry and collect that. I think the commission asked for previous examples of, uh, uh, when charges were made to a constitutional official's, uh, area, specifically to the tax office. Those were delivered this morning. Uh, the four or five that you have there was where the constitutional office contacted our IT department for a quote on IT-related equipment. That quote was generated, a quote was generated by Mr. Davis, proved by the commission. Email was, uh, when a file system was updated, it generates an email to the ISP staff that's been approved and can be ordered. That was ordered. The invoice came in, was matched up with that quote. If the constitutional official does not want our IT staff involved in purchasing, then they shouldn't contact them. They should do it themselves, generate a quote themselves. Yeah, I mean, if we're involved, if they've made a request, you know, if Ms. Thomas asked, you know, Charlie, Brian, or Johnny, I need a scanner, get me a scanner. And then they do, and it's charged to that line item for new equipment, you know, the constitutional official generated that request, not us. So I don't know what the problem is in that.
I can speak to that, I think. I mean, when there was IT, and maybe there needs to be a discussion with all elected officials. Um, generally, that kind of stuff was paid from general county, um, in the past. Now, I know things change, but that's probably.
And that may be, yeah.
I mean, if we're not to call them to get us quotes, then fine. We won't do it.
No, we need, that's why they're here. They're the experts.
But I just, yeah, maybe we need to make this clear and figure out what's the next step.
And that could be where we're pulling the money from. Uh, but, uh.
Which should come out of constitutional officers, what we budgeted for in their, uh, equipment or.
That's always been an issue.
For the high-density storage-type units, I mean, that's sixty to ninety thousand dollars. Those kind of.
Special.
Yeah.
But maybe that needs, there needs to be a limit discussed and how.
Because I, I see these more as routine-type purchases. I mean, drum cartridges, toner cartridges, or whatever's on there.
Talking about the back to justice.
But, uh, for, as it relates to Kay Casto and Cheney, one of the items that evidently triggered an email, uh, after it hit the office to report, that was an error on the commission staff part. We can be, and we can ask, uh, bookkeeping, uh, working with Erica Wilson to do a JB entry, and that'll clean that up. So that was just a key punch error typo, not a key punch error typo on the odd system.
All right, so.
But, and the request was made, because there was, you know, many times, it was according to the, I didn't see, it wasn't directed to me, but where, if charges are made to a constitutional official's budget without their knowledge, well, it's not without their knowledge if they make the request to our IT staff.
Right.
Now, and there shouldn't be anything coming out of Ms. Thomas's budget or any other constitutional official that they're not aware of.
They should, they should.
Or they didn't request.
So what if they request IT to get the, get the, uh, uh, quote? And then, uh, does IT then ask the question, do you want a purchase order generated?
Yeah, I mean, if they get a quote, then that generates, uh, Mr. Davis, or Charlie, or.
Book, book.
Brian would generate a. or Brian would generate a requisition for approval.
But maybe the, uh, maybe the constitutional officer, uh, after you get the quote says, "Oh, wait a minute, I don't have enough money in that," or, uh, "No, I don't wanna pay for it, will the commission pay for it?" Should be some dialogue before you put a purchase order in.
We can get that, we can get the quote back to that constitutional official for them to put it in.
Absolutely.
We can do that instead of...
In the future, IT should not give the commission any quote from any constitutional officer approved. That's what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, we can get that back to them so they can generate that.
It should, it should, after, they should approve it, and then, as long as it's in their budget, it's over with, if it's outside their budget.
See, that's been an issue here, because anything that constitutional officials have wanted, we've always had to come to the commission to ask.
We can get that back...
And not enough money is put in budgets to offset the cost of some...
Yeah. IT do their due diligence, expertise, or whatever you wanna call it. Get that, okay, Ms. Thomas, here's a scanner, here's how much it's gonna be, this is the scanner, we recommend, if you want to purchase this, here's the information. That way Johnny's not generating, or Brian, or Charlie...
I think that's what it should be.
We can do that, that's not a problem.
Just gotta make sure the money, I mean, there's enough for us to do what we need to do.
Right, yeah. That way everybody's, we're not purchasing on your behalf.
That's what happened there.
Yeah. So, they ask for something, and then we just went ahead and proceeded, and there may or may not have been funding in that line item.
The tax office doesn't consider that they should've done bill for typically approved or not.
But, we can, uh, we can change that procedure effective today, that won't be a problem.
That'll be good. This way IT will, uh, give the user...
And that's where most of the issues are coming in from, is IT-related stuff.
Right. All right, what action needs to be taken, guys?
None, it's just an understanding of...
All right.
When we...
It'd be administratively, you can handle that.
We can handle that administratively.
Anything else under item three, under, uh, these matters, uh, Mr. Parker, that, uh, we need to talk about? I see Patsy back there with his, uh, with his numbers, guys, and...
Executive session.
And David, uh, also, and David asked for an executive session, under what purpose? Mr. Parker?
I'm not sure what the executive session's for. I would have to know that comment, Mr. President.
Just personnel issues on some of the stuff we discussed yesterday.
Oh, and the cost as it relates to specific individuals and payroll-related overtime?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would qualify for an executive session.
All right.
In my opinion, it's time they asked for...
All right, before we, uh, uh, go into executive session on that, should we finish up? No, we'll come back on that. All right. Patsy, anything?
No, let's vote on executive session, please.
Vote on what?
Executive session.
All right. We have a motion to that effect, Mr. Trecoff? Any, uh, further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right. I didn't hear anything from you, David, so, okay.
So, we can delay our reporting?
All right, uh, need a motion to go back into, uh, regular session. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're back in the regular session, uh, out of, uh, the executive session, there's, uh, uh, no, uh, nothing that needs to be made, Mr. Parker, is that correct? Just an administrative?
Administratively, we can follow up on the, uh...
All right.
Personnel and overtime issue that was discussed.
All right. If you, uh, let us know where, where we're at on that.
All right.
Um, all right, uh, item four, review, discuss, and consider evaluation of our county administrator and/or other...
Are we done with three?
What's that, Patsy?
I'm not done with three.
Oh, you're not done with three? Well, let's go back to number three then.
No, I wanna go back to three, and, and, 'cause Willie has his notes and I have mine. I actually have his. But this is following right here.
We're back on item three, which is financial matters.
Well, Willie, last week with...
Trecoff?
Yeah, with our expenditures. So, I went to what we have now with the sheriff's state, statement, and follow me along with this, 'cause I, I, this is just what, the way it is.
And Patsy, if you don't mind, speak up for this hard-hearing guy up here.
On average, Ron, we have about a million dollars a year uncollected taxes. One point two, one point two, one point three, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, and one point one. And then we have our, uh, general fund, you know, whatever, our current tax year general fund. Then we have our, uh, levy, and then our ta, total taxes received. So, then the next line item, and touch me, Willie, on this, 'cause I'm following right down with what we do here. We have what we then, out of what we receive, we give a two and a half percent discount if you pay early. There is a question in that, we want you to pay early. We have our interest that we collect on any money that we have stashed. We pay the sheriff his commission, we pay the assessor his foul fund, we collect our fees, we get our total tax collected, roughly sixteen million dollars, and then we start with our other taxes, what we collect from the sheriff, if he breaks a ticket, if somebody gets a building permit, if somebody gets a marriage license, on down. Here's the short call, guys. We're, we are total, our total revenue is twenty-one million dollars. So, our dis, our disbursements are twenty-five. So, here's what we're doing though, right now, and we gotta get this out and clear, and it's not because we can't account for every penny we're spending, we can. But we are transferring money every year, every year, to get a balanced budget essentially. Now, that comes, as long as that's from the financial stabilization, from the cold severance, which by the way, doesn't help us anymore. I mean, we're ending a lot on that. Willie, have I said anything untrue so far?
No, I mean, our cold severance is very limited.
And our financial stabilization is there.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is, is when you take the transfer money to make up the difference, right now, we have, we have, we went from a beginning balance last year of seven million five five zero to an ending balance this year of four eight eight six. So, even David, Ron, with transferring money, which we do every year, every year, we transfer three dot five, three dot six, three dot seven, and this is just a four-year window, Willie gave you it to put in two thousand and nine, but the bottom line is, whether we like it or not, we are because, whether it's not receiving taxes, whether it's spending too much, whether it's, um, exonerations, because, you know, I paid for a car that I didn't have anymore, I missed it, the tax department missed it, and then we said, "Hey, I didn't even have that car anymore," and they said, "Okay, well, that's no big deal, we'll give you that money back." But the bottom line is, and, and it's right there, whether it's, whether it's billing department numbers, and I talked about two weeks ago, and, or if it's what Willie talked about last week, or what I'm talking about this week, the bottom line is, we have a number that is not building back up, and even if you wanna take the transfers, quite frankly, it's going down. So, we have to, as we just said in last meeting, it was said out loud, we've gotta decide, what do we want to do? 'Cause we can't do everything. So, I, I need you guys to let me know what direction you want to go into, that it's gonna be one major project and a whole bunch of stuff to make this county better, but if it's two major projects, I don't think we're gonna make it, and we're not gonna be able to do anything else. And the numbers are right here, guys, but they're not bad numbers. They don't reflect anything, everything's right here, there's no question of what we're doing. And I need to know what you guys want, what direction you guys wanna go in, 'cause we are going down. I, I wish we had a rainy day fund, that unless we vote on it, we couldn't take money out of, that every year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars went out. Uh, I mean, you know, I'll be gone, but someday, that could be a lot of money.
Patsy, do you have a number in mind as to, uh, reserve, uh, that you would like to build to for the county? And what would you use that reserve money for?
Well, the, the rainy day fund, that, we really don't have a rainy day fund, but we have a stash right now.
It's the OPEB.
Well, that's, that's another thing. The OPEB is not a rainy day fund, that, that...
I understand, but we've used it that way.
But we shouldn't be. We shouldn't be. That, that's for emergency, when it comes to personnel. That's not because we wanna put a new exit ramp in, or a new sore line in, or a new what, as for personnel.
Actually, it's for, actually, it's for retired employees.
That's exactly right.
It's not, it's not for whatever, and, and it was a PEIA, or, uh, whatever from there, and, uh, they asked in Charleston, and probably when you were there, for us to send them that money.
You, you...
And, and we refused to do that, but we banked it, knowing that we could pull out of that fund, uh, whatever might be needed for special projects. Now, the, the, from my perspective, I think we had a couple areas of major, and actually, three areas of major concern. One, the airport, whatever we could do there, we saved money by not having to finance, and where we could've financed it and not taken those monies out, and then those numbers would look entirely different. Uh, the, the building over here, the general service, uh, uh, annex, uh, that's been on there all the way back to burning Fasini. So, I mean, that has been a priority, because there was a need for more space, judicial space, as well as office space where, uh, for other constitutional officers. And then we have put a priority on rail-streets, major. Uh, so, I mean, those are three projects, um, that, that I see. Now, there may be others, I, I don't know, but those are all high-ticket items. Um, but I, uh, I agree, yeah, we're going down, but balancing budgets, I've been in government for fifty years, I've had a lot of budgets, and that has always been the tradition, is that when we do our budget process, we estimate low, uh, and, uh, with anticipation that it's gonna be higher with the revenues coming in, and we've always done line items and so on to balance budgets. But not, doesn't mean it's right.
No, you are right. You just explained expenditures to T as did Willie. The problem I keep telling you right now is the expenditures are, are what, the revenue's what I'm concerned about. I know what we're spending, it's on paper. What I'm telling you is, and, and I wanna remind you, the financial stabilization fund has always been out of the general fund. It's never came out of it. We, you have never touched of it, and OPEB was established by you in two thousand thirteen, I, I see that right there, and I've read on it, and it is money for employee benefits, liability, and other contingent liability pursuant to general authority granted by the county commission contained in West Virginia, whereas the Harrison County Commission intends to sequester fund that may require to pay contingent employee paid employer benefits, including, but not limited to, other post-employment benefits, employment benefits. It cannot be used to buy a new table. It can be used to compensate him in some way or shape or form, but it cannot be used as a fund to, to do anything else but employment. So, everything that's in the other fund comes out of the general fund, Willie?
Yeah, the other post-employment benefit, uh, on OPEB fund and other liability, is how it's titled, and, and been created. That's a declining, uh, liability. Currently, as I understand, our financial statement and audit, net liability's about five point one million dollars, as calculated by the state. There's no county that I know of sending the money to the state. Very few counties are even banking the liability or accounting for the liability in a separate fund. Uh, Harrison County has, and that fund right now is approximately over five point six million, just under five point seven million. As time goes forward, that liability will decrease, uh, based on actions taken by the legislature, where the sick leave and vacation leave cannot be used for any post-employment benefits for new hires.
Right.
Uh, I think two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, that change took place. So, that's been a declining, uh, obligation or a liability on our books. So, eventually, that fund, uh, the liability will be down to zero, don't know how long that'll take, or, you know, half of what it is now. So, that, there's additional funding there right now, that's not needed for that liability. Uh, that the commission could use in other areas if the need arose or...
Excuse me, Willie, what you're saying right now is, we have five million dollars there, and the three of us could decide on a two majority vote, to stop funding that totally, yeah. We can't, we don't have to put money in there.
We haven't put money in it recently, yeah.
So, we have five million...
We have five point six million in there right now.
For unforeseen personnel issues. Not a vote to buy a new car...
Correct, yeah.
But a vote because of something with personnel.
Other, this employment benefits and other liabilities, uh, and that obligation on our financial statement is five point one million right now.
Correct.
So, there's excess right now of approximately five hundred thousand dollars, which it can stay there, that's not a problem. And then that, but that five point one million will be a declining liability. So, next year, following year, the following year, you know, whether that's five million, four point nine, and then you still have five point six there, uh, plus whatever interest it's earned. Now, on the financial stabilization fund, uh, there's, as I outlined last week, there were three areas that we spent five point six, five million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in round numbers. The nine-one-one facility, the revolving loan fund, as it relates to the enterprise project for Greater Harrison P S D, which was reimbursed, uh, two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars already, and then the Rotino property. So, we'll be reimbursing the financial stabilization fund, not from general county, but from nine-one-one fees or vital service levies, uh, as that funding would be available for that construction, which is a valid expense under our levy call. Uh, it, basically, we self-funded that project instead of...
What construction?
Uh, nine-one-one construction of the facility.
That was the seven hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Yeah, seven thirty, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Four point seven million was the bottom line of the construction in round numbers. We've reimbursed seven hundred and thirty already, so there's three point nine million still to be eligible to re, reimburse from those funds back to the financial stabilization fund. Uh, and then the general county expenditures, uh, yes, we've spent down our carryover cash reserve, whatever you wanna call it, uh, and from, you know, seven point five and more, four point nine round numbers right now, at the beginning of this fiscal year. And, you know, the major expenditures there, in fact, contributed to that was our HVAC to the tune of one point nine, two million dollars, the HBC project here, uh, the, uh, roof project, uh, here.
But why are you reimbursing the financial stabilization fund if the money came out of the general fund in the first part?
For which one?
I think it's not coming there, Willie.
Which one are you, the, for the nine-one-one center?
Right, but see what I'm saying.
But that didn't come out of, that's, that's going, no, I'm not saying you can't put it back to general county, but the first step is to put it back to the financial stabilization fund, where, was where we paid it from. Now, the original money did come from general county, yes.
Yeah.
Original money. Now, I'm not saying, w, once that seven hundred thousand goes to the financial stabilization fund, you can put it into general county if you want.
But think about what you're saying right now. You went from A, general fund, B, financial stabilization, with the nine-one-one, all on paper.
Yes.
All accounted for.
Yes.
But then you didn't reimburse the general fund, you reimbursed the financial stabilization. Both are going down because the revenue is not coming in. This is not me talking, this is the sheriff's department and tax revenue.
Yeah, I understand, you know, the financial stabilization fund went down. The reason it went down was the three expenditures that we outlined there, that $5,664,000. There were three, three areas of expenditure. $4.7 for E911 facility, $480, just under $500,000 for the revolving loan fund, which still has some balance in it, and then just over $900,000 for the retino property. That makes up that $5,664. A, we're not going to reimburse for the retino property. We've got some reimbursement from Greater Harrison on the revolving loan fund, which went to the, back to the financial stabilization fund. And we'll, the next five years, thereabout, will be reimbursing the financial stabilization fund, the balance of the 911 construction. So, that will be reimbursing the financial stabilization fund to put it back, short of the $900,000 of the retino property, of expenditures that were made there will be reimbursed. Now, that's not going to be immediate, that's a four or five-year time period. Now, that money can flow back, if need be, to General County Fund.
So, you're not reimbursing, that's why our revenue's not going back up.
We can reimburse if we need to, yes.
But the money's not there to do so.
Not yet, no, that's a four or five-year process.
But over the four or five-year process, this commission is about to go gut deep in debt, and we don't, we're spending money we do not have. We want more than we can afford right now, but we know what the apple in the sky is, what we're all for, but we want more. We can't do everything.
Cannot do everything. In our current budget, there's a line item of $2.1 million for the general service annex. The debt service is $1,003,000 to $1,005,000.
The money is a line item.
Correct.
The money is not there. I can write a check, Willie.
I would disagree with that.
Willie, I'm telling you right now, the numbers of what we're spending out on four, the last four years, and the money coming in are off.
I agree with you.
And I'm telling you right now, you're telling me.
I understand that.
That this was COVID, that this was going to get better.
You cannot put an HVAC system in, or a related expense, or a roof or a related expense, every year.
You are 100% right. You are saying exactly what I'm saying. We're not going to have any money to put into the county because we, as county commissioners, are putting all in the county commission. You just said exactly what my argument's been.
Now, if you have other capital.
And I was, like David said, at one time, thinking this building was a good idea. The bottom line is, after doing the homework, we've overshot ourselves.
Now, if you have other capital projects that take a higher priority, then that's a commission decision. But, you know, that's the reason we did the roofs, that's the reason we've done the HVAC. You know, I don't know of other capital projects on our horizon that would take that priority, so it's just a matter of shifting those funds that we've already spent, already allocated for in past year's budgets, I mean.
But conservatively, we have a million-dollar roof on the old 911 center. Conservatively. I'm being as conservative as I can be.
I agree.
Because we and David about died when it came to $800,000, remember? I'm the only one that had that conversation.
There's, the estimates I remember seeing are $400,000 to $500,000.
David, did me and you not hear $800,000 to repave that building and put a new roof on it? Now, I know I'm.
I'm not talking about the repaving.
But I'm simply saying, you're telling me exactly what I'm telling you. You're just, you're just making it like it's okay, and I'm telling you, as a commission, elected official guys, we're going down a dangerous path. I have my checkbook in that little backpack. I can go all through town right now writing them. Ain't nobody getting any money for them, I'll tell you that. And that's the change, that's what we're doing right now. We're spending money, and I know what projects I want to do, and you know what projects you want to do. We have one too many projects right now, and every month, every week, I sign more money for those. Believe me when I say it, the ceiling that we, me and you discussed, the change order, that's because they were supposed to get that money on the back end, and they're worried we're not going to do the project, and they got it now. That's exactly what it was.
Yeah, the money was supposed to be on the back end.
You're right, it was.
When the work was done, but we moved the work up.
But they're seeing the shortfall we're seeing as well. So, anyway, we got to make up our minds, and we got to make agenda items, and we've got to tell the public what our priority is. Is our priority, an airport that's going to change north, central, west Virginia, or does a building like the 911 center, while it is fabulous and much needed, will never generate an ounce of revenue for us? It'll never pay itself back, it will never do anything to make this county better. So, you guys have got to decide. Of course, it's two to one, as Ron always reminds me, first day I walked in here, Ron went two, Patsy, and I get that. But I'm telling you right now, we have to evaluate where at because it's not Patsy Tree Cost Commissioner talking. It's our department telling us, guys, this is what you're bringing in, this is what you're spending, and you're going backwards. It's like me inheriting money. Eventually, if I spend more and coming in, that inheritance is going to be gone. So, we can live a champagne right now, but later, we're not going to be living a beer anymore. We're going to be living, oh, God, you know, we're going to, we're going to start counting pencils around here. And believe me, there's other counties in the state of West Virginia right now, believe me, every month, every month. They ask why somebody works four hours overtime, not 40. I didn't see what's answered, Willie, did I?
No, it's just a matter of, the capital projects, the commissions going forward, you know, annex project and/or other projects, you're going to have to prioritize those.
So, what do you guys want to do?
Those is the priority, I mean, I mean, if there's other projects that are out there, you know, I don't know, I don't know where they are on the horizon or what they are.
Didn't I articulate the three major ones?
Yes, and we're looking at, for rails to trails, of utilizing a vital service levy, recreational programs for some of those cost factors. So, it's not utilizing General County, which we can do, I mean, which is allowable under the levy because it's a recreation program.
But again, that's a levy.
What programs would you like to see canceled?
David, it's the building. We don't need the building. I, I mean, I, why would you ask me that? I've been talking about this for months now. We, 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 we both overshot.
And how are we going to increase tax collection?
Work with me, David.
I, 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 Patsy, I'm.
Work with me.
I'm telling, I'm telling you how to cut spending right now.
Let's have, let's get their heads together and figure out.
We cut the building, what else would cut? Just one item?
Tell me. Well, it doesn't hurt to start with a $25 million project, David. So, I mean, it's a good start. Tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, again, let me say something, if, if, if it's the difference between gas and electric, but you want a new car, do you pay the gas and electric bill and drive your old Honda a little bit longer?
So, to stop the building, how much are we going to put into this building? To finish.
That's another thing, David. Why don't we know how much it's going to cost to remodel this building? Why do we know how much it's going to cost to jail?
I don't know what we're remodeling it for.
Why are we remodeling it? See, you're asking.
Exactly now, now, the people are cramped, out of rep space. Every time we've maybe suggested move state employees out of here, we've been denied.
Tell me one.
I might want to move county employees out, when state employees can leave and we can have county employees work here.
I had three people, and you did too, to come and ask me for a new ice machine at the 4-H bar. That's three more people than has asked me in a letter, in a phone call, or in person, to build a new building for them.
Did we buy the ice machine?
No, we denied it, and the other, and the other group did it. No, the other group did it.
I have to listen, see, I don't remember. I thought the ice machine was bought by a third party. So, we do have an ice machine.
Yeah, but my point to you is, Ron, there was more interest in 68,000 people to buy a new ice machine than there was this building. Not one person has come to that table, not one letter's come on my desk, not one phone call's come through my phone to build this building. Who wants it? Who wants the building? So, David, you're right, where do we start? I just gave you one heck of a head start.
Okay, so then we can add.
You just put $2 million? You took, you took a one item out for $2 million? Next year, guess what? Maybe we have a good year of tax collection, and at $4.8, turns it back into a $5.5. And then we're cooking with gas. And the following year, it's $6.1.
But I agree, we'll never build the building because it'll never be a revenue producer.
No, David, we're not building a building once, because we don't need it. Two, nobody, nobody has asked for it. The only person I can find that wants the building, we can't afford the building. Can't afford the building and do what we know we want to do to change history, not in Harrison, but north, north, central, west Virginia. It's as simple as that. And then you want to ask me, where's the revenue going to come from? In 10 years, you told me that $1 billion could potentially be $2 billion in revenue.
Yeah.
You told me that. There, I just gave you two. More revenue because of 80 acres flat.
If this county worked properly, and assessed values that were true, I could get you $3 or $4 million tomorrow.
Then let's start talking about it. Let's start finding ways to raise money.
Because this county is not assessed properly.
Now, let's fix our problem before we dive in the pool with no water in it.
And the money for the airport was to be financed.
Great, I agree, me and you talked about.
So, you're not going to, you're not going to lose that all at one time.
So, the one we just talked about, the three things you just talked about, not building the building, the revenue the airport's going to generate, and financing the airport, that bottom number is going to start going back up again. And someday, I'm going to be going from here, and I'm going to be a black and white picture on that wall like all three of us. And that number is going to be a great number for somebody else to sit in that chair I sit in right now and serve the citizens and decide what they want to do for, with it. Because this is opportunity for us.
Patsy, let me ask you a question with reference to the general service annex. Staff had come to previous commissions, including the judicial people, that they were cramped, that there was a need. You go into the assessor's office, and they're lined up elbow to elbow. Susan needed more space. So, our constitutional officers helped with, with regard to doing more space. Now, the annex building needs to have some major, major overhaul to make it safer. It's, it's in deplorable conditions in terms of structure. So, when we started on trying to accommodate for the need of the services that was being provided here, we looked at renovating that particular, the annex building, and I think it was a $20 million price tag that was put on it early on, early on. Then, as we continued on and looked for other properties, and that's when we looked at the Neely, Neely property that's now become an issue for us, and then across the street. We looked at every building down Main Street. My concern is that, as a continuing commissioner, once this COVAC is over with, and everybody is back in here cramped, nobody's working from home, and they've come to you guys as commissioners and said, we need more space, we need this, are you then going to consider moving these services out to make downtown Clarksville better by taking some of the vacant buildings they have and renting like we're doing across the street with the Chase Building? That's $80,000 a year we're paying for rent over there. I mean, it's just something to consider, instead of consolidating your government into one area. You're going to have the same problem. You're going to have those people coming to you and saying, so you'll have more than one. You'll have a number of people saying the need is greater. I mean, we already have a greater need for the Supreme Court people. So, anyway, just something to think about for a future plan.
But Ron, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it.
With that?
If we can't afford it, we can't afford it.
Well.
I would love to have a big house.
Yeah.
I can't afford it.
I mean.
I'd love to have a platoon.
You're saying we can't afford it, I'm just saying we're drawing down on reserves. We're not going to, we're not going to bankrupt the county, the county government. It'll, it'll not be bankrupt. I mean, if we have to put a zero spending on any purchase and whatever, I mean, nothing. So, you're talking about, there are some counties that haven't given their employees a cost of living in years.
You're right.
Mineral County being one, Work County. I mean, we can go down the line and take a look at those. So, we've been very fortunate with what we're doing. Have we spent more than the revenue coming in? Yeah, yeah, but.
Why would you want to decrease?
You know, you, you guys are going to be faced with, with some of these issues anyway. I just don't want to see us spreading government out so we don't have a one-stop area for governmental services, so, but anyway.
I'm just saying, Ron, what you're saying, I totally agree with. Nobody's arguing what you're saying. What I'm telling you right now is that we're going to get to where, we're going to question whether we can get a cost of living rate. We're going to get to where do we keep Band-Aid in a cruiser that has 100 and so many miles on it that we got to wonder if it's safe or not? I can't reiterate to you guys enough, we are so blessed here, and the last thing we want to do is not be able to contribute to the rest of the county because all our money is tied up with the county commission. And that's where we're headed. The county commission is going to consume the county budget, and the county is not going to get what it needs and deserves.
All right. Maybe my foresight is just a little different than, you know, we, we can agree to disagree on some of those. But somewhere down the line, you're going to have to expand the services, structure-wise, for your, for your county services. We're not reducing services, we're growing government. And that's what we need to stop, is growing government. And, I mean, we can look at the budgets, we know where the money's gone, where it's being spent, so.
So, the fact that, what you're telling me, though, I want to make sure, because I've got to quit, I got to quit hitting my head up against this wall. The fact that we know what the numbers say, we know them to be true, we believe them to be accurate, is irrelevant to what we're going to do as far as spending.
We will not be bankrupt, we'll no, we'll not go down to zero. I can't, I can't.
But would you want to be house poor? Do you, would you want to be house poor? Because people are house poor in this county. They can't, they don't do, they don't go out to dinner, they don't have motorcycles, they don't go on vacation. They have homes with furniture that's old in it because they can't afford new furniture. Because every cent they make goes into having that house. It's called being house poor, and that's where we're headed. And I'm telling you right now, Ron, I'd rather live in a modest home that's clean, with grass mowed, and go on vacation with my family, have a nice garden that I know is safe for me and my son, be able to contribute to organizations and charities. We're getting to where we're going to be house poor. We're not going to be bankrupt, I didn't say bankrupt, we're going to be house poor.
I call it living within your means, Patsy. Your checkbook there, you know what you've got, you know what you can spend, you know how many checks you can write.
But I've told you what we have, and you see with the numbers.
And, and I'm projecting that we will continue for years down the road to have revenues that, that your expenses will not exceed the bottom line of whatever your revenue. You'll not break the bank.
But they're, it's happening right now.
Well.
It's happening right now.
You're taking money out, you're, you're.
You're taking money out of.
You're drawing down, you're drawing down on what you got, but you're not exceeding what you can afford.
If we have a repeat four years of what we just had, if we have a repeat four years of what we just had, as you said, there is no more savings. Right, that's exactly what I'm telling you. If things in the next four years, spending doesn't come back under control, and if revenue doesn't. doesn't increase in four years, exactly as we have it right now, we are running a line of no reserve. And that scares me to death.
All right. Well, I think the simple thing to keep you from being scared to death is that this county finances everything with its own interest, and you'll always have money in the bank.
So instead of being house poor, we're credit card poor.
Well, that's what we've avoided so far.
Why not just spend within your means, David?
I have the savings to pay for stuff when it comes up. That's the point why I save is for those unexpected things. I don't save it so that I can keep it and look at it and blow at it for the rest of my life that I've got X number of dollars in there. It's there for emergencies, and then I fill it back up. We haven't got to that point. We still have lots of money in our savings.
Cut it in half.
Again, and when we look, what have we saved in interest? Because you just said it's gonna be credit card. We're not gonna have to put another roof on the courthouse unless the courthouse burns down. We're gonna have to put a roof over here if we're gonna keep this thing going to the tune of probably 600, 700,000. We don't have to put a new face on it. If you wanna cut money, don't put a new face on the sheriff's building, just fix the roof. Don't fix the AC, save money. And we've just, we know where one of our biggest expenses in the county is when it comes to budget time, and I guess we're gonna have to take a hard look at it. We know what department that is. In the last two years, that department has spent 1.7 million, I'll say it. So what are we doing to control that department, the 1.7 million?
All needs to be, all needs to be brought into the, all needs to be brought into picture.
I mean, I wanna know how many counties have spent 1.7 million in that department, their department like that in the last two years. So, I mean, you wanna know where a chunk of money's on for the last two years? We know where to go. We know which department's the biggest expense. And I'm not gonna tell you that I'm gonna deny the people of the county that they can't have that department, but that department is one of our biggest expenses.
Not one thing in here has been said by anyone that's not 100% on, that, that's not 100% true, and I guess I, I'm, I just, I'm just different in the sense that I, I do believe in living with your means, pay as you go, and, but again, let me reiterate, we don't have a really good four years. Matter of fact, if we just, at the pace we're going in four years, will be without any, without any savings.
I could be anybody, anywhere.
So why not prepare for the worst? Why? Why would we, why would we live recklessly?
Patsy, it's, it's been worth it, and I, and I'll just point, like, say, if I'm amusing when I see people say, don't do anything until the election. That's, 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 that's the most terrible thing that I've ever heard of, is wait till the election, then make your decision to build or don't.
I never said that.
I didn't say you did. I said people have said that. You talked about wanting to come in here. You, you, you can't live your life as you think that everything is gonna fail. If I'd have done that, I would have never been successful, trust me. I was down to pennies, and then it came back. If you think you can't make it, then you won't make it. If you feel that this county is on a downward spiral, and that we can't afford to do what we're doing right now, and you can't think of a positive way to make a comeback, I don't want to tell you.
I did tell you positively, cut spending and work on creating revenue. And you told me how to create the revenue, and I told you how to cut spending.
Create for revenues, Eric, well, I haven't heard any other revenue creation.
David, what is?
And, and that's not government's job, is to be a revenue creator here at the county all the time.
But it's our job to, it's our job to protect the 68,000 citizens of not having a budget that has a shortfall in it.
Doesn't have a shortfall yet.
It has a shortfall, David, because you put-
Patsy, because, because nobody spent any money in this county for six or seven years and ran it up to eight million, and then they decided to spend it. I mean, so it got spent.
I'm guilty of it.
It's always a shortfall, I mean, as on your savings, because what are you gonna do? Like I said, do you leave it there forever and don't spend it? How much money did we save by doing the 911 in interest alone? That's a shortfall. We, we took $4 million out of your $10 million and turned around and probably saved the county $3 million. Because of the way we did it.
We saved the county $3 million?
Same, same way with the Rotino property. There was a savings center, right? Well, what the savings was, that you, you saved the airport, we had to save the airport. No, I know, but I mean, we bought the Rotino property out of general fund money. Yeah. Paid for it instead of financing it.
All right.
Meaningful discussion. Again, Patsy, be not afraid.
See, see, David, Ron, when it's my money, this isn't my money.
It's our money.
It's, it's ours, and then 68,000 people.
Our money.
Yeah, and we represent them.
See, I'm hearing different, so, with all due respect, so. All right, other things? Patsy, any, any more budget items that you wanna? I mean, we're not doing any, there's nothing to come out of this, is that correct, Mr. Parker?
Not unless the commission has anything come out of that. It was just to review the information, answer questions that the commission may have, and you know, provide, you know, clarification or whatever, you know, the situation is.
David, do you have any final on there?
No, since the, this commission moved on April 28th, proceed. With the demolition, and the commission concur to proceed with that, and the commission decided to go out and find finances, and all three commissioners concur.
That was in April?
Yes.
Was that before the pandemic?
No.
I was during that 28th.
Well, we have a right to change our minds.
No. You have a right to do homework and realize-
Yeah.
We're going down the wrong direction.
All right, is there any action that needs to be taken on it? Patsy?
Commander.
David?
No.
All right, moving right along then to item four, review, discuss, consideration and the evaluation of you, Mr. Parker, and/or other administrative staff.
I was on the agenda to provide an opportunity, if the commission so desired, to make comments, questions, whatever the case may be, as it relates to job performance of myself and/or other administrative staff members.
Well, from my perspective, I don't always agree with you, but that doesn't make you a bad employee.
Well, you are not, Mr. President, or sometimes I don't agree with you.
Well, you need to agree with me because you work for me, I don't work for you.
But you're the decision maker, and I support the-
That's correct.
I support what the commission directs.
That's correct. Uh, but other than that, Willie, I don't, I don't have any big heartburn. When I do, I'll let you know.
You've never been bashful, pretty?
I've never been bashful, I'm too old for that. Patsy, any comments you wanna, on that, or on staff? David?
No, no, I, I have none.
All right.
I think that's gonna be a, an issue.
A big issue? How, how, but, how is that? We're looking, Patsy, on a, an order on, is that, yeah, that's the one from where we have given the employees half-day off for the Italian Heritage Festival on Friday. The court has given us an order that the judicial people are not off, and that the doors are to remain open for court's purposes. Is that what it is, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
So I reckon we just need to go on, on record on that, David? Patsy?
Yeah.
Just to let you know that our people are still off on half-day on Friday. Is that what we voted on?
Yes, sir.
All three of us voted?
Yes, sir.
In favor of that? No? Yes?
If I remember correctly, everybody was in favor of that.
We did vote on that.
No, it may have been-
He was gonna give more, he wanted to-
It was a two-to-one vote.
Who was me? Did I vote no?
I-
What's that? Like you wanted to give them all, dude. Somebody wanted to give them all, thank you.
I was, I don't remember.
I did? Oh, I did.
I'm pretty sure it-
All right, whatever. But anyway, the half-day still stands for county employees, but the doors will remain open.
We'll communicate that to Mr. Miller.
To Director Miller. All right, anything else? Patsy, anything?
Anything comment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Something I have is, Willie, if you could get the new equipment and anything that's, just, some IT, to corrections, to get everything in running that's, that's the box just sitting there, and, and anything over there that needs that IT wise, and also the saving requests that's been to the West Virginia Extension Office, get all their phones and internet working, and what you need to do is just sign one, stay until they're done, and, and just make sure they're up and running, internet, phone, computer, ever.
All right.
Please.
I think an issue out there, Patsy, the quality of the internet.
Where?
That's some of it. I know they do have a couple phones that blew up.
It was weird, I got, I saw a phone call from two different departments in one day. We didn't have help with their-
That line's not that well, and the same way down for most of them.
Oh, it's down at Animal Control?
Oh, we'll never, at all.
Just walk the line to either places and-
You don't have good service in here?
Saltwell? Yeah. Just terrible. What's your journey?
All right, anything, David? Hearing nothing else? Motion to adjourn? All right, we'll just stay here then.
Aye.
All right, so, all right, we're out of here. Thanks for everybody that, uh, attended by Zoom.